With making decisions that we always hope and pray will benefit all of our students, all of our teachers and our administrators. And so, dear Lord, we ask for your guidance and your direction, your instruction. Lord, we pray that you would give us a dose of your grace and glory as we make these decisions tonight. And Lord, I pray for our entire district as we all head out for spring break, that you would keep each and everyone safe, that you would give rest where it's needed and bring us back safe together. It's in your name, we pray.
Thank you. Okay, Desiree, you got it right. Perfect. This is our time for open forum. Again, you are more than welcome to speak. We cannot answer any questions, but we would love to hear from you. And I think we have, this is Cheek, that is good to see y'all.
Yes, it's good to see y'all. I always love to come share happy news with y'all. And this year, we've been working with our DI program again. It's almost a year-round program now. We work 11 months out of the year as far as planning and working with volunteer in the community. And this year, we thought of it as, thought of our program as a, we are starting fresh again. And we had 13 teams that we took to regionals, started back in, into August 1st of September. And we went to regionals February 8th. And we're taking nine teams to state the end of this month. So, we have 72 third graders through a senior in high school, several seniors in high school, that we will be going to the University of Texas in Arlington and competing against over 3,000 kids from across the state that are first and second place winners. So, I'm really excited. I'm excited about the community encouragement and involvement. And we just wanted to say thank you for your support. And we love seeing your faces. And we would love to invite y'all on Tuesday night, March 25th, to our Showcase for State. So, you can see a little bit of the engineering and technology and technical design and production. And it's not children's professional theater, but it's kids learning how to present their ideas in a creative and original format. We'd love to invite you. So, excited, and I hope we have good news to tell you after state. We have good news either way. Our kids have done well. And we did have a senior, a Wiley High School senior, that won the college scholarship for the Greater Fort Worth Region. And to parents and teachers, that's always great news. So, thank y'all for letting me barge in, and y'all have a blessed evening. Thank you.
Desiree, will y'all make sure y'all put that on the board letter? It's March 25th. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, ready to move on. Approval of Midwest. Everybody get a chance to look at them? Yes? Okay. Now, moving on to our consent agenda.
Mr. Light said I have two minutes. I mean, it's not gonna hurt my feelings. Okay, starting with our bills on page eight, just a few things to point out. We held our annual physical where we bring in, you know, our bus drivers have to have their physicals every year. So, it's kind of out of a convenience for our employees. And then, out of, it helps our bus driver coordinator, you know, make sure she's not chasing hundreds of people down to get things. So, they help hold it up here. Action Sports is awesome to work with us and get that done. So, that was, that happened during February. And that was that $7,200 for 120 drivers to get their physicals done that day. And then, on February 14th, American Association of School Customer Service, they, I guess Mr. Light had coordinated for our frontline employees who are really dealing with the public and stuff to have a training on customer service, which the ladies in admin office thought it was really good, you know. Because that's one thing I always talk about is, you know, we have external customers and we have our internal customers. So, just to get a refresher, I know Desiree had mentioned it was very informative and probably something every new person going into position like that should do. So, thankfully, that was awesome for them. Okay. And then, moving on, just gonna point out, our HVAC repairs over on page nine with Kerry Services. That was all of our west campuses. And that's kind of a normal bill we have. And then, our Education Service Center, we had our normal contracted service, which were a little over 20,000. So, 300 of that was for our bus drivers again. Moving on to page 10. We had quarterly spraying by Germ Blast, which is the infection controls. And they come out each quarter and of course do everything. So, they had done that right before our long weekend. And so, that was really, of course, with everybody being sick, it's always helpful. Then, going down to Lemon necks, Inc., Mr. Aminet, he has found at his campus, a lot of teachers really enjoy this subscription. It does offer a bunch of test bank questions that are TEES based. And it gives them opportunity to kind of help all kinds of needs with children. And they kind of customize that more and more. So, that. Then, over on page 11, we have in tune music. That was a little over 11,000. That's some of our normal stuff, but a little under 9,000. That was for a sousaphone purchase. And then, we also had a mallet station purchase, which that's not my area, but I know, like we've seen before, those instruments are their highs.
What's a sousaphone?
I don't even know what one is.
I'll Google it later.
Yeah. And then, of course, our payroll, our monthly payroll of February, just right under 3.2 million. Moving on, we did have, with Tasby, Inc., I was just gonna point out, that a little over 11,000. 10,000 of that is an annual amount. And they base that off of our 20, this year was based off our 22, 23 audited financials, a calculation they run. So, that amount kind of fluctuates there. Then, moving on to page 13. And just to point out, we have, we get very busy at this time with UIL, one act play, things like that. And so, Mr. Schumake does an amazing job and coordinates a bunch of things. And so, sometimes we're splitting costs between districts. So, we kind of turn around and repay ourselves and repay the theater area or department. So, that's what that is. Then, sorry about mid-page on 13, is just our visa purchases. And over to page 14. Anybody else have any questions? Okay. And just a reminder, on those bills, of course, the last day of the month was Friday. So, these are through the 26th of February. So, next month, when you're seeing that, it'll be the 27th and the rest of March. So, kind of the same situation with our cash. This is gonna be our balance as of February 26th. Brittany Davis in our office does an amazing job to keep us balanced. And she really, pretty much to the day, she is on top of it. So, she does a great job there. But, I was gonna point out, interest earned, of course, was not on there as of that, because that doesn't post till the end of the month. So, next month, you're gonna see that split out a little different. Of course, it'll be all accumulative total. But, I thought I would go ahead and point those out separately next month, since we're a little short on days and time. And so, our overall balance in cash at our dispense is the little over 24 million. And when I checked today on Lone Star through February, we were still holding at that 4.35% of the interest that we were earning there. Of course, our debt service account went down because we did make the little, or about 8.4 million, our debt service payments out of that debt service account there at Lone Star, which is all of our bond payments. Any questions there? Moving on to our statement of activity for the bond. Of course, again, the interest earned to date does not include interest earned in February. And then, we had a total, total expenses, a little over 1 million there. So, our total expenses, I mean, 172 million is where we're at. Questions on that one? Revenue report, page 18. So, as of February 26th, which we had most of it, it didn't vary too far off. We'll catch up again next month. But, overall, sitting at 64.49%, which, you know, we're about halfway through our year. So, the only thing I really wanted to point out on this one was our food service. They've really done a good job. And we added some vending machines at the high school. So, that has helped. So, I was just kind of looking, you know, really with them, it's six out of nine months that we're kind of collecting for. And so, that'd be 67%. And we're almost at 75%. So, I think we're really doing good on the year. And those vending machines have helped. And I think they've been a great hit at the high school. So, any questions on our revenue? Onto expense. Overall, our expenses at 52.41% for the year, which is a little less than where we were in the prior year at this time. Only thing I kind of wanted to draw attention to was, from last month to this month, there was a little over about 4,250,000 in expenses for the month. And just a reminder, 3.2 of that was our payroll. So, I know we have that conversation a lot, that so much of our expense is tied up in our payroll. And so, I just kind of wanted to point that one out. Of course, our debt service expense went up due to those bond payments being made as well during February. Any other questions?
Thank you.
I move with Patty Vales?
Second.
All in favor?
I'm trying to beat them. You can't do anything.
This is a reference. I know. Are y'all good? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, moving on to canceling the school board election.
Yes, ma'am. We are in a situation where we didn't have any opposed candidates. So, we'd like for y'all to order cancellation of the 25th school board election.
Saved about $32,000.
Saved about $32,000. Congratulations to Miller, Laura, and Brian who's out here in the audience. So, that's makes everybody happy.
Ladies first.
Oh, making motion to cancel the 2025 school board election.
All in favor?
It's two, man.
Okay, moving on. Items of information.
Can you believe that? Principals report?
Ready?
Mr. Aminet?
All right. I might stick around a little longer then.
It doesn't mean make it go longer.
No. I was meaning to leave a little early because of baseball practice. But, it looks like we might get done in time. I don't need to leave early. So, Wiley West Junior High is rocking along. We got a lot going on in the spring, especially this week. There's tons of things happening and going on. But, I'm gonna go over the report real quick. The numbers, and can you see all the counts and the attendance and all that? So, that's pretty self-explanatory. Lead class, that's kind of our pre-pals that we do in the junior high. They have started mentoring fifth and sixth graders. And they go to their classes every Wednesday. So, that's a great thing for those fifth grade students. And Ms. Riston does. And those students do a great job. Our lead students do a great job working with those classes and those students. Our kindness club, we kicked off the kindness campaign, gave you a shirt. All of our, a lot of our fifth grade students received a shirt because of our gracious sponsors. It's all on the back. There was a bunch of sponsors. Miss Lauter Milks were a sponsor. There's a lot of different sponsors there on the back that you can see. But, thank you to our sponsors. And then, we continue on with basically, the theme is motivate, inspire, team, encourage, and lead is our theme this year for the kindness club. And there's gonna be some more shirts created and made. Actually, I think your son's.
Yes, he's still excited about it.
They did a contest of designs in class, and he actually won the contest. So, he's gonna get one of the shirts designed. So, and then CIS, we'll be doing, continue on with our kindness and respect and healthy friendships. And then, also, I think they're doing some bully lessons. That's coming back after spring break. Benchmark testing, we just ended, finished that up in February. Got a lot of great information there for our teachers to continue working, getting our students prepared for the STAR. And then, again, you know, with the Chromebooks added, we were able to test fifth through eighth grade multiple days. And it all worked. Technology worked. Everything worked. All our students were able to test on Chromebooks. And it all was perfect. So, we hopefully continue to do that with our STAR testing in April. Jumping down to TMSCA, they're off to a big hit. They're doing a lot of great things. They won the Sweetwater meet. They won the All-Nine meet. We have over 40 kids that have already qualified for state. They're winning a lot of stuff, doing a great things with TMSCA. Band just did their pre-UIL concert. They have their UIL concert and site reading, March 25th, 26th. Our choir is having theirs this week. Boys go tomorrow, girls. We have three choirs, so boys tomorrow and two girls' choirs on Wednesday. Athletics, we're hitting the track season. Wiley West Junior High did great at the first track meet on Friday. I think our girls, seventh and eighth grade won first place. Overall team and our boys, eighth grade, won first place. And our seventh grade boys got second place. So, great job there. And then, they move on to track meet this Wednesday in Big Spring. Something I didn't mention real quickly, our eighth grade boys, A-Team Basketball, they went undefeated their seventh grade and eighth grade years. So, I think it happens a few times. But, just to point that out, that they did not lose a game their seventh and eighth grade year. Did an awesome job there. Theater production, SpongeBob SquarePants, hopefully y'all came out and watched that. If not, they did a great job there. Eighth grade college day, that happens Thursday, where we take our students to, eighth graders go and visit different colleges. We're going to five different colleges this year. Typically, we've gone to four. This year, we've added the Texas Tech Health and Science. And then Hendrick's obviously gonna come and speak to them too. So, bringing it's sick kind of career opportunities there to them. Spelling bee, Soraya Titus won the area championship. And so, she'll move on to Washington DC to the Scripps National Spelling Bee, representing Wiley West Junior High, or Wiley ISD as a whole. So, that's Wiley West Junior High.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Do you give that spelling champ any tips of how to spell?
Tracy.
Tracy.
It's a typo. It's not that you don't know.
I have fat fingers.
Y'all ready?
We're ready.
All right. Hey, Wiley East Junior High, again, a great place to be. STAR tutorials are going on. We're about to start our 10-day STAR blitz. That will come at the end of the month. The 10 days before STAR, we're gonna be doing lots of reviewing and knocking it out. Our STAR dates, they're all in April, the 10th, the 15th, the 17th, and the 23rd. So, I mean, that literally is, it's upon us. We're completing all of our T-test evals and walkthroughs. We're wrapping all that up. We're pretty close to being finished with all that. Just a couple, a couple of stragglers that we're finishing up. Our eighth graders are gonna visit the high school this week. So, a big day for them. TMSCA, we do not have a huge number of eighth graders, but we have an eighth grader that's pretty phenomenal. Ariangarlapati at one of our meets, he placed first in math, science, calculator, and number sense. He won them all, which is pretty phenomenal. Now, the meet they went to this weekend, I think he won two. And he placed in the top 10 in all of them. But, at that particular meet, he won them all pretty impressive. So, kudos to him and to Ms. Gremlin and Ms. DeYoung. Our band and choir, they're gearing up for their UIL competitions. Ms. Leets and Mr. Delegarza with the band, Ms. Savari with the choir. Our school musical, Hades Town, was a huge success. I don't know if any of y'all were there. It was pretty phenomenal. Ms. Reed believes that, at first, she thought we were the first junior high to ever do that performance. It's a fairly new Broadway musical. I think she found out maybe one other school had done it. So, we're at least the second junior high to do it, which is pretty phenomenal. And it was pretty bold and big. And the leads, if you didn't see it, there were three lead characters. And they were just, it was unbelievable. I mean, it was just unbelievable. The female lead, I think she's gonna be a Broadway star one of these days. I really do. She's got the voice. She's, her name is Fifna Sebahizi. I even told her, I go, you have, you can just go by Fifna. That's your star name. You have a star name. And she really, I really think she, she really might be a star one of these days. She is phenomenal. The track meet was Friday night. I was in the booth on the mic, which was really fun from about 4:30 to about 10 o'clock, when the lights went out right before the boys mile relay. They came back on pretty quickly. But, anyway, we finished second. I think everyone but the seventh grade boys finished second. Our girls, who was about the best, I've seen our girls at a track meet in a while. We've got some really great individual girl performers. And they put on, they put on a show, a few of them did. Hey, our art walk is coming up, April 24th. Some of y'all came last year. Put that on your calendars. April 24th, Ms. Jones puts on quite a show. It only lasts an hour. It's a come and go. So, come on out, 5:30 to 6:30, the art walk. Our lead interviews are this week. Cheering bells, tryouts are coming soon. We'll name our boat, our sixth boat builder of the month. That will happen on March 19th at our next staff meeting. We have one more Bulldog to Bridge to go, and it's on relationship skills. And we will have wrapped up our social emotional learning for the year. And last week, we completed our fifth annual My Awesome Colleagues with our staff. We assign each staff member about three or four names. And they write, they write these notes of kindness. And then, I collect them all. And then, I send them out in emails about the last eight or nine days of the month. And they say things like this. Jeanette Rodriguez, when I think about what it means to bring my A-game, I just imagine what you do every day. Every time I see you, you're on a mission. And I love the way you approach every minute of your day with purpose. You never settle for the status quo. And you bring everyone around you to a higher level, especially your students. Mrs. South is often referred to as the glue that holds this place together. And that couldn't be more true. Being an administrator or a counselor is a heavy enough load to carry. And Mrs. South manages to do both with excellence. What a blessing it is to be loved by Allison South. Mr. Cervantes, he's our lead custodian, is a true hero. He works tirelessly to make sure Wiley East Junior High looks like a brand-new campus. There is nothing that he isn't willing to conquer. He completes all his tasks with a smile on his face. His attention to detail and commitment to maintaining a spotless environment do not go unnoticed. Mrs. McRight, who is our front office lady, our greeter, is simply the best. She is caring, kind, helpful, positive, funny, and an amazing friend to have. She knows no stranger and always makes you feel like you're important. I am so thankful to call her part of my family away from home and so grateful to know her. Gatlin Martin is a leader, a motivator, a team player, a role model. And he's just getting started. Down the road, he is going to be one of those, hey, remember when? He was starting out at Wiley East Junior High, as he is becoming a coaching star. Hey, the east side, we got some great people out there. And we appreciate y'all letting us do what we do. Mr. Autry, kudos to you, my friend. And congratulations. Thank you for your time. I enjoyed you as an east side parent. And I appreciate you being on the board. So, thank you for your service. All right. Thanks, guys.
All right. Well, spring has sprung. And it is busy at Wiley High School. And so, all the things going on, we wrapped up, since I spoke to y'all, wrapped up basketball. Soccer was going on, but we're in district play. They actually played, boys and girls both played their last district game on Friday. Swim took seven swimmers to state. We had Maria in the 15th in, I think, the breaststroke. Is that right? Okay. It was not the underwater mermaid swim. I know that. I think so. And then, basketball wrapped up. We had some girls were the district champions there, which was awesome. Coach Hopper was the coach of the year. And band, we had three in the area auditions, three advanced to the 5A All-State band. And then, we had one who is incredible, made the 6A All-State band. So, for the first time in school history, he made the 6A. He's, I don't think he plays the sousaphone. I think he plays the saxophone.
Still don't know.
And if you saw them, he's the soloist. Anytime there's a soloist, he's the soloist. It's so good. Anyway, they're all amazing.
Isn't he like a sophomore?
Yes, he is. The next Kenny G, I think. Anyway, coined it. Choir, 16, we're taking 16 students from choir, made the state solo and ensemble contest, which is awesome. Ms. Greganus does a great job. They have their evaluations this week over, I think it's at Abbling High. On Wednesday, they'll be over there doing that. Art competed at Vase this past weekend, and 12 pieces made it to state by 11 students. So, our fine arts people are just kicking some tail there. UOL Academics recently, in their most recent contest, they won sweepstakes at the tech winter conference. They got second in sweepstakes. They will have, will have district right after spring break. And I expect us to get certainly some regional and then some state kiddos and academics as well. HOSA has two HOSA students. That's our health science student organization that advanced to state, two of them did. And so, they'll compete at the end of April. Ms. Cheek already talked about DI. And so, three of those teams have high school students. And so, they will compete at the state meet at the end of May, or April, I'm sorry. Unified Bulldogs, we sent three of our pairs to Austin to represent Wiley High School and Special Olympics at a leadership summit. And so, they got to speak and get recognized, which was just a really cool experience. They got to go and stay overnight in a hotel and do the whole thing. So, that was awesome. Ms. Baker does a great job of them. Ms. Shon's Taffy had the best bus driver in the world. Drove down to Galveston a few weeks ago. And
What's that book?
The Unicorn.
The Unicorn. There he is. And we had one from that state meet, one qualified for national. So, she'll compete this summer. Other things going on at the school, we've started our teachers, teaching teachers our three-T program. And so, teachers are going in other teachers' classrooms and watching how they do things, how they run things, how they deliver curriculum. And it's been an awesome experience. They turn feedback into me. And that's really fun, to read what peers say about each other and how they can grow and become better professionally. Because we have some of the best right in our own building. If you are in the high school world, you've noticed that we have pivoted, It Takes a Pack, to a podcast. Really, it's a video, but I don't know what you call that. A vlog? I don't know. Anyway, we've sent two of those out to parents, trying to reach more parents that don't necessarily come to us. So, we're trying to get the information to parents. The first one was on distracted driving. The second one was on healthy relationships. And so, we hope that those things are reaching parents. He doesn't know this yet, because we're slow to announce it. But, the teacher of the six weeks, for the fourth six weeks, was Mr. McDonald. He had tons and tons of nominations from his band students. And they all get, every teacher that gets nominated gets a card with what was written about them. And then, every student that gets nominated gets a letter sent home to parents with what was written about their student too. And so, that is something fun. New courses, just to breeze through those, all of these courses are CTE courses. Again, our goal is to streamline our CTE programs of study and to increase our capacity to obtain CCMR points. And so, we're adding a third practicum in Ag. We have an animal science, a welding. And so, we're adding that plant and soil science practicum. We are adding webcom and professional com. Those are half, those are semester-long classes that will go together, that will feed into our program of study. And really, we struggle finding electives for our freshmen. They fill up so fast. And so, that's a freshman level. It's a level one course. It's not just for freshmen, but freshmen can take it. We're adding entrepreneurship too. So, those students that take entrepreneurship one their sophomore year can go on and take entrepreneurship two, and then the practicum their senior year. We are replacing scientific research and design with practicum and STEM, because it offers more flexibility for the teacher and the students, and how they get credits, but also what they can do in that course. And then, we've signed an MOU with TSTC, which we haven't had in a long time. And we're gonna have dual credit in cybersecurity and dual credit in aircraft technology. And so, that will help with that CCMR. But also, it's a need, a regional need here in Abbling. And then, y'all can see all the things we have going on. That doesn't even list them all. But, they're scheduling courses. We have eighth grade parent night, which is really exciting. Cheer tryouts, which is this week. School day SAT. All of those first ones are all happening this week. And then, we'll go on. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lots of stuff.
All right, prom projects.
Okay. So, we had a chance to talk about quite a few of these things last week. The elementary and the Ag building are going along. You know, we're still waiting on some plans for the metal building, so we can get that foundation. Everything is ready. We've just, they will not allow us to port until they get those planned. So, tennis building, they're painting. They're about to start putting the floors in, the Uh, the elementary and the Ag building are going on. You know, we're still waiting on some plans for the, uh, the metal building so we can get that foundation poured. Uh, everything is ready, we just, they will not allow us to pour until they get those planned. So, uh, tennis building, they're painting, uh, they, uh, they're, they're about to start putting the floors in. The lockers are to be delivered at the end of this week. So, that's, uh, getting closer and closer to being able to be utilized. Uh, summer projects that we've talked about, uh...
Wait, real quick, before you move on, can I ask a really, and you're gonna be like, that sounds silly. But is there any type of, this may, this may not be the right word, branding that's gonna go on?
That building?
That building and then like you drive up and you see the back of like the...
The press box.
The press box. I know that sounds silly.
No, no, we've been talking, I've been talking to Andy.
I don't know, like, I, I drive by it every day and I'm like, is there gonna be something?
Yes, yes, just like at the tennis building, the original, there's some on that side. Andy knows about that and he's gonna be working, he's working on that. I don't know that he's determined exactly how he's gonna do it. I think that's part of what he's trying to decide.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, although that's a good question, because it is big and great. I mean, lots of big and great, yes. Uh, so, uh, summer projects. One that we have talked about, I actually thought we were gonna get away with not starting it until possibly after the summer, because we don't need it till next track season, it's a West Junior High track. Uh, however, I got some people out there to look at it, same people that did the track at East Junior High and, uh, the turf project at the high school of Paragon. And they did an evaluation and that is, that track was put in Mr. Hagler in about 1984 or '5.
Mr. Hagler, he keeps saving.
Bring that up again.
I know if you have to go to all that, but, uh, so they have determined that it is, the foundation is bad. The curbs have shifted. It's basically, we gotta start over. So, uh, they are, they actually, because of how schedules work, uh, they, they really get busy in June. And so, they would like to start that thing as early as mid-April. And so, um, we're working on that, uh, as quick as we can. And, um, so we'll, we'll let you know how that progresses. We're trying to get soil samples right now. Um, so there's a lot of things that have to happen pretty quickly, but they think they will be, if everything fell right, they could be through real early in June, which that's crazy to me.
Pond project, we'll use our...
It would be a bond, that's right, pond project.
Are you gonna have to re-turf the middle too? What are you gonna do?
Well, no, no, that, we, we haven't really talked about the field itself, but, um, you know, it, that field is old. I think it could be revived with a little tender loving care, but, uh, the track itself is not. They've gotta re-grade it, the drainage is off and so, a lot of things there. Um, uh, the west intermediate flooring and paint project is, uh, we're about to go to bid that. Uh, the West Junior High Fieldhouse, I brought in Sarah Reader, who is, uh, the interior, uh, design person for Catco. And we went through that and then the restrooms, uh, and we, we've got some good direction where to go with those. They think they can make a big impact there. Um, HVAC controls, which we've talked about on the west side campuses, uh, we got bids on that today. And, and Johnny Rose, who's, uh, does our engineering work on that, he, uh, he was anticipating close to $750,000 to do all that. The low bid, and there were three bids that were fairly close, came in at $436,000. So, that was a big win. Uh, they're, they're gonna be ready to, we'll bring a contract to y'all to, uh, to approve at our April board meeting for that. So, and probably...
They were all pretty equivalent, like they were...
One was about $456,000 and then the other one was low fives. Pretty tightly compacted for that, so we were pleased with that. Uh, Mr. Witter's class has made great progress on the portable classroom, which is behind the softball field. It looks good as well, so, summer projects, there you go.
Thank you. Okay, last thing, the RDA readings for special education reports.
Ms., Ms. Dawn has been waiting for this all year long. She said they will wanna hear about results-driven accountability.
Yes, excitement. Um, there's a lot of good news in this to share with you tonight and in addition to what the principals share. Um, the first thing I would like to say though is welcome tonight to Darren Hughes. She didn't know I was gonna say that. Darren gets to do this next year, so she is here tonight to learn what not to do, what I do. Uh, but I appreciate her being here and, uh, a lot of, of what I'll talk about at the very end is, is the group that she is a part of, our diagnosticians, and the hard work that they put in to help keep us, um, in compliance. So, the RDA report, um, results-driven accountability, it is made up of three, um, populations of students. You can see that, I think all of y'all are on that. It starts on page 25 in your board packet. Uh, the first group, the bilingual, English as a second language and emergent bilingual, and then the other special pops. That is made up of students in foster care, students experiencing homelessness, and students who are military-connected. So, there's a lot of kiddos involved in that group. And then the third one, special education. Now, in each of these categories, um, they, uh, TEA collects data that we send in through several different ways. And they measure us on academic achievement, post-secondary readiness, and then disproportionate analysis. So, that's how, uh, the report is set up, okay? Um, so if you'll go ahead and flip over to page 26, this is where it starts the first, the blue group, the blues and reds. Now, we have the blue group, that's our, our, um, bilingual, English ESL and the EB's. Um, and the way this is scored, if you look at the far right where you see performance level, you can see the, the, you can see the indicator, they're numbered, um, on these two pages, one through seven. And then on the far right for each indicator, then you see the, um, I call it the grade or the score that we got for that, the performance level. Um, zero through four is a performance level that's given if it's something that basically counts towards our final score. And zero is the best and then four being the worst. We didn't have any fours this time, but we haven't ever, I think. Um, if it says no data, that just means that we didn't have any kiddos that fit that category. If it says report only, as on, uh, page 27 at the top, indicator five, report only means that, um, they collect the data and then we actually have the numbers that go with that, but it doesn't count towards our final score. So, it's used for informational purposes only. So, you can see that in, um, our first category of students, we did well. We had all zeros. Um, on indicator 11, page 29, our performance level says N.A.S.A. That means, um, they did a special analysis on that and that's another one where I have access to the actual numbers, but the actual numbers did not meet the minimum criteria for being in a, in a public report, okay? So, that is something that I can share with the administrators so they will know. You can see that our rate on that was a tiny bit high. Our rate was a 2.2 and the state was looking for zero to 1.8. But our, our total number of students was too low to actually count, okay? And then we go on to our other special pops and, um, same thing. Performance levels of zero or report only, um, and that, we did really well on that one. And then we go to the special ed where they like to collect a whole lot more information. Um, if you look at the first indicator, starting on page 35, of course, that's our star passing rate, um, for grades three through eight. And, uh, we had a one and a couple of twos and a three, but our principals are always working, you know, to make those better. Our kids work hard and our teachers work hard on that and, and I know they will continue to do that. And then, we have some more zeros. If you'll next flip to page 39, indicator eight starts. And then eight through 18, 18 is on page 41. On eight through 18, um, you can look at what those indicators say. Dyslexia representation, regular early childhood program rate, um, regular class greater than 80%. If you look at page 40, you see the sped representation. Um, and then down on, uh, 14 through 18, it starts talking about discipline, okay? And so, um, that's what those are all related to and a lot of those are report only and they're all zeros. Um, if you look at number 18, we got a performance level of zero, which is the best you can get. But if you look at the box below that, our one little hiccup was on the far right side, you see SD year one. Well, that means in, um, the category of two or more races, um, with removals, with disciplinary removals, we were a little bit too high, okay? So, they were looking for a threshold of, um, no greater than 2.5 and we were above that. Now, again, those numbers are not shared here, the exact numbers. We have access to those, we even have access to those students, so we can look at that and see, you know, and, and try to help ensure that we're, um, doing other things so that we don't end up... The SD, sorry, I didn't say that, stands, stands for significantly disproportionate. And they say year one, because in year one, it just means, hey, be aware, this happened. If you get it year two in the same exact category, it means the same thing. Hey, be aware. But if you're significantly disproportionate in year three, then you're writing a corrective action plan and you're setting aside some of your federal money, money. Um, but, the good news is, Region 14 met with Darren and I and they have already looked at our data. So, the, the discipline data actually comes from year 22, 23. All of the other data in here is from last year, 23, 24. But the discipline was 22, 23. So, Region 14 folks have already looked with us at that and, and they are predicting that we're okay in this category for 23, 24. So, we don't have to worry about a SD year two, but I just do have to make you aware of that, okay? So, um, if you'll flip to page 42 and, and actually look at page 43 first. 43 is where the, the scoring comes for what they call significantly disproportionate. There are 98 opportunities here to not get it right. There are, um, 14 categories and then seven races and ethnicities that they look at. So, each one of those little check marks are a place where a district could be found significantly disproportionate. And we were good in 97 of those, in, for 22, 23. But expect for 23, 24 that we'll be back up and be okay in all 98 of them. Uh, it's just pretty daunting, you know, when you see that and realize what's going on there. So, our final score, how did we do? That's on page 42. Um, the top set of boxes, there's your three different categories. And then you can see where they have the zero, one, two, three, and so forth, that's the performance levels. Um, so TEA takes that and then for special ed, they also throw in four, um, four categories of federally, federally required elements for special ed. Um, and part of that includes where we have to be 100% compliant in our, um, referral process. For example, when we get assigned consent on a referral, we have 45 days to process that and then 30 days to hold an ARD meeting or we're out of compliance. Um, last year, last school year, Darren and everybody else in our office, along with the administrators and the teachers and the counselors at their campus, we all processed 283 initial referrals. And we were 100% compliant on all of those. So, I always like getting to say that. We, we, if you're not 100%, basically you fail. And you, and you, uh, you know, write a, a little plan and things like that. But, um, we managed to get that 100% every time. So, what you see in the middle, the federally required elements, we scored performance levels of zero on that as well, because everything was good. So, at the bottom, that's our final grade. Sometimes that's what I start with, I take you there first. Tonight, I didn't do that. Um, so our final grade, those are called determination levels. After they apply all the calculations that they do to these numbers, then they come up with a DL. And DL one is the best and that's what we got in all four categories, uh, all of this data combined. And so, this is another really good report. I think I said that last year. And I just wanna thank all of the administrators, the counselors, their staff, um, all the students. You know, the students doing well on star and staying in class. Um, it truly does take a whole team and I appreciate your support as well. Any questions?
Congrats, Ms. McRite.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. That's all we've got. Somebody has to move to attorney.
Oh, yeah. Question to attorney.
The end.
Y'all had a great, great ride today too.
Cameron, I love you big time.
Letting you have your moment there, Megan. The best mo, the best one too.